America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin tonight with our school updates. Mr. Fry, New Milton Elementary.
Well, good evening, guys. Just to let you know where we're at today, our numbers about 240, about where we were at last year, our kindergarten numbers are down a little bit, but we picked up our first grade and our second grade, so we're right at what we were last year, right at 240 students. A couple of new things around the school, super excited about, we've put a five-foot fence around our new playground and walking track down our drive and the parking lot. It makes me feel a whole lot safer with those little kids because it kind of blocks that road, they can't run out into the road being a kid or something possibly worse. So, we got that put in toward the first of the year and super excited about that. We added a computer class as one of our specials, try to get these kids, because we all know computers and the age of computers, which we're probably behind at times, but we've added that in and Ms. Bonney's trying to teach our kids more about computers and all that. A little bit, we don't have a whole lot of tests done and all to go on, but I do feel very good about our AIMS Web scores. Last year, we ended up with over 93% of our kids in Tier One instruction in ELA and almost 98% of our kids in Tier One instruction in math. And basically, what that means is they're not receiving any other intervention, they're not deficit in certain skills and things like that, and that's not only a testament to our wonderful teachers, but also the EAs that work in there because they conduct most of that intervention. And whenever we say EA, those guys, they're not hired one last year. They thought they were going to be cutting out stuff and grading papers and running off papers. They're another teacher, they're just an extension of that teacher, and they're in there working and working with those kids, and I can't brag on those guys enough what they do and how important they are to these schools. Ten rated scores, we do have some second-rate test scores from last year, and they're not where we want them to be, but we were, our second-grade teachers and those kids were above the state and district average, so proud of that. Again, not where we want to be, we've got a lot of room to grow right there, but looking at those test scores, they were above those state and district average. Guys, and I'm fortunate, we're fortunate, because we've got three grade bands right there, but it's a wonderful setting for those children. I mean, it's ideal for those guys. They've got people that, not only teachers, but faculty, staff, that care about them. They pray over those kids, they pray for those kids. I see tears in their eyes when, they're affected, they're, they care, they care about those kids, and I know whenever I'm speaking, I'm not speaking just about New Milton, I know all these other schools, Ms. Kipro will be up here. I'm not going to tell you anything about none of these other schools, but I can tell you about my school, and I feel like we've got a family atmosphere there, I feel like we are family. Over the last year or so, unfortunately, we've seen a whole lot of serious sickness in our buildings with faculty and staff. They're always there to pick each other up, we've got to cook for this one, we've got to raise money for this one, this one needs help, this one's EA, has been out, going to be out for a while due to sickness, hey, I'm going to volunteer, my EA, I'm going to give you because you need, you need some time with an EA, so just whatever they can do, they're willing to do it, never have to ask them if they see something that needs to be done, they get in there and do it, I don't have to say anything to them. Chuck Cagle said something, and, Mr. Winkler, I don't mean to step on any toes, but sometimes lawyers get a bad rap. Chuck Cagle said something at the first of our in-service. I was in high school education for 19 years, been in elementary for two, so I don't know a whole lot about elementary education, but he hit the nail on the head when he said those elementary teachers are the miracle workers, because they do miracles in those classrooms. Now, I'm an old high school teacher, I didn't do any miracles, but those teachers in the floor, I mean, they're digging with them, and whenever he said those elementary teachers are miracle workers, he hit the nail on the head, because those guys are miracle workers, and I'm just thankful for the opportunity to be there in New Milton and have such great faculty and staff that I have to work with. Anybody have any questions?
I don't have a question, but I will comment on something you said.
Yes, sir.
But I appreciate it. In our school system, I believe in my heart, we have a lot of unsung heroes.
Absolutely.
The EAs are one of those categories, and they work very hard, very diligently, and showed her a lot for a very...
Major.
Major, yes.
That's not, I was trying to think of something less than that, but, you know, they showed her a lot, and I appreciate you bringing that up. I know the other principals feel the exact same way you do, I'm not just singling you out or something, but I appreciate you saying that because they do take on right there. And I appreciate what you said about them being miracle workers, because they absolutely are, the teachers are. When they come in that classroom every day, they're supposed to play them before they get in the building, and I know it, you do too, and I'm grateful we've got the teachers that we've got in this county to take care of our children.
You know, I've commented to them, I don't know if it's just my school, but there's been an uproar, or has, or I wouldn't say an uproar, but we've seemed to be our car rider line, whenever we start picking up and all that, not a whole lot of space, but whenever we first started, man, I think my first year last year, my heart would race because I was scared to death. I look back, some early, you know, early in the year last year, and I look back and there's four, five, six EAs helping put those kids in the vehicle and make that process look smooth. I never asked them once, they just, again, go back, they saw we needed help, and they dove right in there. And I told them the other day, I don't know how other people perceive things, but in my eyes, things go really smooth right there. Once we start that process, it goes great, and it's because of those people coming out there and willing to help me, doesn't matter if it's training, doesn't matter if it's cold like this day, they're out there helping, and they just, they just kind of everything goes so much better.
Well, I just appreciate your saying.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Fry.
Ms. Kipro, Union Heights Elementary.
Well, first let me apologize, my notes are somewhere between school and same way in here, so somebody at same way has probably picked up my notes thinking it's a grocery list, because that's where I went before I came here. I would just like to say thank you. You probably don't get to hear thank you enough, I feel like we don't hear it, I know you guys don't hear it, because you get to hear all the complaints. Well, thank you for allowing me to be at Union Heights, where I absolutely love, 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 and for allowing me to be here tonight and for all the support that you give us. We have a lot to celebrate at Union Heights. I've said this to several people, this is my fifth year there, and I, for the first time, I ended the year and started the year with the same group of people, and it made my life so easy, I mean, it was just, it was great. I was like, what's going on? It's three weeks into the year, nothing's happened. And so, that's always a positive. We have a full free camp, our number is 18, we've got three new students this week, and it's just Tuesday, so we're sitting at 279, I think is what I looked at today when I walked out of there. We have had a precious new baby girl addition to the family at Union Heights, we have another one that has just announced that she's expecting, we've had one that just got married and one that's getting married this weekend, so there is something going on all the time. We had our first home basketball game last night and had an absolute ball, it was so much fun, and everybody was just happy to be there, and it was like fellowship with each other. Our goal for this year, and it's our goal that we're going to have for several years, is to work on our technology. I am proud to say that when we get our next batch of Chromebooks, that we will be a one-to-one from fifth through eighth grade, and that is so exciting, especially with all the online capabilities that we have. Now, we just work on the lower grades, we'll get that as well. We have hit the ground running in all aspects, we've had militia from the State Department who's kind of heading over the core office, who's part of the best practices or Read to Be Ready, whichever one you want to say, she came and met with our teachers and did a in-service for us for all our lower grades, had a great day, learned so much, but able to take that back and put that in and implement that, and it's like, I would love, I know that Mr. Joe, he comes out all the time, I've invited him to have some Thanksgiving with us, but I would love to see any of you out and just see what's going on at Union Heights. I promise you, you'll leave there blessed, because I do every single day. Does anybody have any questions or anything?
What time are we going to eat?
What time do you want to show up? I'd rather not eat at 10:30, if that's okay. All right, so you show up and that's what time it is. I just thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Kipro. Now, we'll move on to our presentations. Our first one will be our 21st Century Extended Learning, Ms. Stephanie Johnson.
Hello, everybody. Tonight, I just want to just fill you in a little bit about what we've done over the past year, what we're continuing to do in the program. I'm the program director, so I oversee everybody in the county as they do their after-school program and before-school program. Some of the things that we're doing this year, we have partnership with Read to Be Ready, so we have three grants in the county, and each of our grants gets $2,500 to purchase books, so right now, we're kind of in the middle of getting all that list together. We do a lot of stand and steam, and you're going to see some of that in just a few minutes from the Lawrenceville High School group. We do fitness and serve a healthy snack, they're required to do one hour of fitness per week, and then every day, we have a healthy snack. We have some with math, we do social emotional learning, and we have a program right now called Positive Action that we're working with. We do tutoring, homework, and paper to paper, which is just something that we have done If some of you are wondering how we support this program, it is funds that are received from grants, the grant is federal, it comes from ESSA, ESSA, or Every Student Succeeds Act, it's called the 21st Century Community Learning Center Grant, and it's part of Title 4B, which is closely related to the title of funding. Every state gets so much money, and then those states do a competitive grant cycle, and our next cycle starts in February 2019, and we did have a grant that will be, the time will be up this year, so we'll be applying again for that grant. Certainly, we have three grants up and down, so that should be it. Everything we do is based on performance goals, and there's four performance goals that we relate everything back to, and that's all students will reach a high academic standard at a minimum, attaining proficiency or better in reading, language, arts, and math, all students will exhibit positive behavior changes that support academic and social growth, the percentage of students who are chronically absent from school will decrease, and family engagement will be embedded in the entirety of the program. So, everything that we do, we connect back to those four goals. This past year, our attendance was, it was really good, actually, but we tried to reach the goal of having students who will attend 30 days or more and average at least one hour per day. We had 68% of our total that did that, but we'd like to reach the goal of 75% this year if possible. So far, we've enrolled 462 students, but we want to keep those students coming, because unless you spend 30 days, at least an hour a day with them, according to the state and federal guidelines, you've not had time to reach them. So, that's what we're looking forward to doing, is reaching all these students. We're working with students of Smith County to help them be ready for the future, and any of you that would like to come by and visit a program, please do so in the afternoon or in the morning. I know some of you probably have been in the buildings before and maybe have family that works for the program, and we'd be glad to see you. Are there any questions from anybody? If there's not any questions, then I'll save the best for last, and that is the GHS group, they're coming and they're going to do a program for you and show you some of the things that they're doing at school.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Smith County Board of Education. My name is Camden Austin, and my friends and I have come here to present to you our STEM Club. We meet on Fridays after school, and we try to work on projects that involve technology we want to learn more about. We do this with various projects that give us some insight into some scientific ideas. Here are a few of those projects. In this project, we're making some non-Newtonian fluids. This one consists of corn starch and water. Non-Newtonian fluids react to pressure instead of temperature to change their viscosity. If you would punch this, it would be hard, but if you just dab your finger in it, it would be like water. Here, we are trying to change the magnetic field to have a longer reach. We're doing that by stacking magnets in different patterns and testing it with some powderized iron, you'll see in a second here. We tested one magnet at a time to see what shape we would get for the field. This is the shape we got for our final design. It collects around the edges, and we found that that shape is the best for interacting Here, we salvaged an electric motor from a broken blender, and we rewired that and we use it as a sander now. We were learning about potential energy, so this is a mousetrap car, the mousetrap stores potential energy, and when it's released, it pushes the car forward. This is a wimpser's machine, it uses electromagnetic induction to manipulate electrons, and it creates a positively charged electrode and a negatively charged electrode. As you can see, there's arcing between those two. We use this to test our capacitors, which hold electrons. Here, the electrons are jumping out of the electrode into our capacitor. A large amount of time in STEM has been, has gone towards making robots, and before we could do that, we have to learn how to solder circuit boards. So, one of our members here is soldering, and what they're doing is melting this metal into these holes, and on the other side of that, there are components that, once they receive the metal, they become connected, and it creates a path for electrons to flow. Once all the components are in and soldered, the circuit is finished and is functional. That is a voice changer, I believe. Last year, we did a lot of 3D design, and we designed some coins that you'll get to see later on. That's our 3D printer. A while back, Tennessee Tech gave us a trebuchet, and we used it to learn about projectile physics. We also modeled some of our own trebuchets after it. Here are a few of the robots we've made. Before we learned how to solder circuits, we had to understand circuitry, and this is a breadboard, that's how we learned about circuits. Unlike a normal circuit board, you don't have to solder your components in, you can just place them in, and it's less permanent, so you can reuse components and make a bunch of different circuits. This is our hovercraft, it's almost frictionless, and we did it with just a leaf blower, some plywood, tarp, and some duct tape. One of our more recent projects was engineering an air cannon. Ella White and Dylan Griffin are going to walk you through their design process for that.
Alrighty, so today, my name is Ella White.
I'm Noah Murphy.
And together, we designed a miniature air cannon, brought to you by the GHS STEM Our first step in designing was discussion. First, we asked ourselves questions such as, what if we designed a much larger model of the air cannon, and how much more powerful would it be than the original? What if we made a remarkably smaller model? Would it be just as powerful as the original? And eventually, we came to the concluding question of, would the physics stay the same if we sized the air cannon up or down? The second step of our design process was to make a prototype. So, what we did first, we made a rough draft of what we wanted our air cannon to look like, using a plastic cup, rubber bands, plastic sheet, and paper clips, and it looks something like this. The third step of our design process was to make life-size dimensions. So, what we did first, we used an air cannon that we already had to take the dimensions of everything, as you can see here, diameters, lengths, widths, you name it, and then we sized them down to make a much smaller replica based on a quote-unquote wedding cake pattern, based on three rings. As you can see here, these are our new dimensions that we took. Our fourth step in designing a mini air cannon was designing and printing. Dylan Griffin used TinkerCad to design a majority of the different parts of the cannon, including the three rings and the border around the smallest ring that would cause a smoke ring effect, as you can see here. The fifth step was redesigning. We figured that we needed a smaller, singular, and smoother redesign of the cannon, so we used TinkerCad again to produce a redesign of the cannon with similar proportions, as you can see here and here. Our sixth step was completing the cannon. Now, you see, we are not fully done with this project. As you can see here, we have already completed our smaller model of the air cannon that we already have, but we are not done yet. We still have to make a much larger model, and we are hoping it will look something like this. Oh no. But yes, we are hoping it will look something like this. Next, we will have Hannah Wasmer with another recent project in STEM Club.
Hello, my name is Hannah Wasmer. Recently in STEM, we have been presenting ideas and discussing them. I wanted to know more about neutralization, so I brought it up, and we ended up doing an experiment to do with it. We use citric acid and baking soda, we dissolved them into milk to be mixed together, we poured the two solutions together, and the reactions take place forming water, salt, and lots of carbon dioxide bubbles. I will now show you the reaction. That right there. Then we get the baking soda. This and here. Then we mix this. If we don't correct, it should make an explosion. Alright, I'll get the tablet.
Yeah. Thank you for giving us your time and letting us present during your meeting. I hope you understand a little more about our part of the after-school program to remember us by, we made you all fruity printed tokens. Hands and hand those out.
We've got different colors, I don't know what color you want.
It doesn't matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, just hand them around. Any questions?
I don't have a question, but I commend you guys, I mean, that is madly impressive.
Thank you.
Really, it is. I hope you all enjoy it, I mean, that's really cool.
You've been really busy, quite a good, quite a good stuff. I'd love to have one of those hovercrafts at the office, but you'd have to figure out a way to get it past our safety program.
You're having fun and learning too.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm curious, I am curious to know how much outside of school you all spend thinking about what you're going to do with this program, because I'm betting that it's not just on Friday afternoons that you all think about this, so...
I spend many hours at home designing different things.
That's what I figured.
Like, I design this and those little coins, all kinds of different stuff, creative them out.
I spend a lot of time doing the math on it.
I bet.
Personally, if I just ever get like random questions in my head, I'll just wait for Fridays and try to sort of see how to do it, so you just do your time here and all the realizations I have to make.
Well, I'm mad impressed. Good job, guys.
Yes. Thank you all, good job.
Thank you. Let's get them around while we're here.
Yeah.
He didn't really blow up big.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about need to duck.
She wasn't too concerned, so I was alright with it.
We will move on to our consent items. Do we have a motion on our consent?
I make a motion, we accept the consent items, eight to will.
Mr. Apple, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Lewis, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have our superintendent actions, hope everyone's had a chance to look at those. Now, we will move to new business A. This is 2019, 2020 school calendars, we have a motion on new business A.
Second.
Mr. Shoulders, Mr. Moore with a second, any discussion? Not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business B, this is policy amendment 4.701, maintaining test security, and this is a first reading. We have a motion on new business B. Mr. Manning, we have a second.
Second.
Mr. Apple, any discussion? Not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. New business C, this is a permission to purchase a double-stack gas combustion steamer for New Milton Elementary School. We have a motion on new business C.
Motion to approve new business C.
Mr. Moore, do we have a second?
I have a second.
Mr. McCallum, any discussion? If not, business involves money, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business D, this is bid approval for gasoline. We have a motion on new business D.
So amazing.
Mr. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Shoulders, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business E, this is a bid approval for diesel fuel. We have a motion on new business E.
I move.
Mr. Apple, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Manning, any discussion? Mr. Manning, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. Now, we'll move on to discussion A. This is the salary comparisons with our surrounding counties. Turn it over to Mr. Schmied.
This is good, not only, I think, to be enlightened, but I know, uh, Scotty, you was ability, like this joke stopped me. About everybody just paid it, because I wanna make sure I'm always attacking, I don't let anybody else, during the morning to come to me. We, uh, Tricia put a lot of time in this for me, uh, we've taught a lot of school systems, we've, uh, a lot of departments. What I'm giving you, there's a lot to digest, I'm handing it around, and then what I'd like for you to do is study it, and at that time come back with what you think, but I don't think you'll wanna get into all these numbers tonight. It's pretty in-depth, and then I can add a lot more to this, if you'd like to talk to me about it, but you'll keep your passion around.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a comment real quick while we're doing this?
Yes, sir.
I just wanna say, Director, I, since I had this on the agenda recently, I appreciate you coming back so fast, we, I really wasn't expecting this this week. So I appreciate you taking the time to be there and getting it out to us for our campus culture. Thank you, sir.
I better get to you. Appreciate it, what I've got. And some of it was shocking, some of it was both, both ends of the spectrum, but, uh, you know, we're, uh, in ways very competitive, and you can see some areas which are sure need to, to be done to talk about, so. I can handle it, there are a lot for me to, and I really wish you'd take the time to, to look at it and, and look at where we're at, and then come to me and talk, and then we kinda get to it with plans.
We'll, uh, like I said, we'll take time to look at that, so you have a little time to digest it. There'll be a whole lot to try to look at right now and talk that off the hill for us. If there's no more questions about that, we'll move on to the discussion B. And this was, uh, the Rose property.
I've got a lot of numbers, a lot of depth numbers, uh, a lot of research. I don't know how in-depth, as far as to now, I think I would suggest that goes into the building committee, of course, when you get into it. But one thing I would like to say is that the church did came back, you know, the, the engineers did ask us if we purchased the Rose property, to probably look at buying part of the aging property and the church property. The, 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 the aging family, they come back with a fifteen thousand per acre price. The appraisal of the kind of shot from the church came back this week, and it came back to twelve five per acre for eight acres. So, that's where I'm at, and if you, I can give you whatever you want, but I think it would probably be more, uh, the right city for the building committee, the door, really in-depth numbers, and, 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 but I'll do whatever you want me to do, so I, I'll do it, great.
Uh, I think probably, we probably do need to go for the building committee first, don't you agree, Mr. Manning, your chairman?
Yeah, because there's some in-depth stuff.
There's, yeah.
I believe we do that first, and evaluate, and then come back to the full board.
Yeah, I don't care to do it tonight, but I don't know how in-depth you want me to get.
Right, it's, uh, we need to look at it through the committee, first of all, reason we, we made the committee, we just...
One, I, I have one question I think you can answer pretty easy. The church owns how many acres?
The, which one?
The church.
The church is approximately seven point seven eight, seven point six eight, somewhere in there.
Seven and a half, roughly.
Seven and a half, and, and the aging properties, how many?
Well, as much as needed.
As much as needed, okay.
They recommended, I think, ten acres is what they, they recommended. That's, uh, all we drew.
If everybody on the board is good in, and of course, when we have the building committee meeting, anybody's welcome, it's not just the building committee, but that's probably the purpose of that committee anyways, to...
Absolutely, I'll need to get...
We need to look at it first, then we'll come to the board, there'll be no decision made, for it's brought for the full board, but it would just be something we can discuss and that, a little deeper. Everybody good with that?
So when is that meeting?
Well, it, we'll have, we'll have to say, we'll let, Mr. Manning, he's the chairman of that committee, we'll have him, let him hit us with some dates, and then we'll announce it to the full board, but...
And if you all wanna try to make, before the next meeting is fine, or if you wanna wait?
I mean, I think we're at a point that we're ready for that, but that's up to you guys. I've got, I think what you need, uh, for its numbers at this point, is close, because, like, for example, electric companies, they won't give us, you've gotta kinda base it off some stuff on our own research, because they say they can't give us anything that we have planned. And it's hard to get a, a real estimate when you don't give us the plans, but you get a, I can give you some examples of what we're down around us, and what the costs were. I can make any time.
So what, just, just to bring me up to speed, I know I was the previous board member that was here. So, are we absolutely sure that we're gonna, we need to build a school? Have we done the studies that show that we need extra room for X amount of students and X amount of...
The answer to your question on that part is, no, we don't know what we need to be on. The, the purpose of this is to see is the Rose property is actually gonna be feasible to continue to pursue that. No, we have not done a study, we, we've...
Because we don't wanna hold his land, you know?
We're gonna have to have a company, we...
He's, he's required us, I mean, what, he's, he's let it be known what he's...
No, I think you misunderstood my question. Are we being mandated to build a school, or are we just, have we had a study that proves that we need some more schools?
We don't have to.
We made it, we kind of, uh, as part of last November, when we kinda had the, um... Well, yeah, we had a, a serious overcrowding issue, which resulted in the New Milton-Gordonsville situation and all that being changed, uh, based on what is projected, projected growth. And we know that even if we approved a new building tonight, and everything was ready to go, you're looking at five to seven years before the doors even open. So we, based on projected growth, we know that a new school is gonna be needed, and it's likely gonna fall in the Gordonsville area primarily because of the subdivisions that are being built, and its near, location to the interstate and all those things. So we feel like that a school is definitely gonna be necessary. We don't know whether we need a high school, or an elementary school, or a middle school, and that does need to be done with a study. So that, that is the issue. The problem is with the Rose property, and I don't wanna couch it as a problem, but a concern is that the limitation that he's made clear on that piece of property is that he wants a full campus high school, which we now know encompasses the football field, athletic facilities, baseball, baseball fields, softball fields, ag, uh, ag, what? Vocational, all of that, and we're not sure, or at least I'm not sure, that that's even what we need. And so that is a limitation, but in between now and March, I think, that's kinda what we've got to decide, and that may be a loose... Yeah, you know, March of twenty nineteen, that was when we initially had to make a decision. So that's where we, we are, and that's the, you know, the holdback, and I just done some quick numbers on this free property that everybody doesn't understand, um, why we purchased the other property. I, just some rough math without my phone, I mean, you're, that's another quarter of a million dollars that's gonna have to be expended to get the free property, in addition to the utilities and everything else that, which we've already calculated to be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is more than we paid for the Preston property. So, that's the dilemmas, those are the issues, and if I've misspoken, somebody please tell me, but, I mean, I think I've, I've pretty, pretty well summarized what the issues are.
And that's what the meat of the building committee, you know, these ones, estimates and costs are, things that have to be done.
Right.
There's some big numbers. Free's not free.
Yeah.
Let's make sure that I have the labels.
Well, I don't think we, I don't think we need to, I don't think Mr. Rose give that property... And I don't know if we're slinging mud and saying free is not free, but we need to understand that, that, that property, if you had to have it, and he didn't decide to give it to us, what would it cost us, plus what we'd have to do to it? So, I don't think we need to be slinging mud toward Mr. Rose. I'm not, I'm not saying that that's the problem.
No, 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 no. No, 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 we're all grateful.
Well, I'm sort of picking that up, I don't mean to do that way.
No, no, the, what, the issue that I'm saying is, we have caught, the board as a whole has caught a lot of, of flack, because we turn, we turned down a free piece of property because he is being generous.
Yeah.
Uh, it, it is...
Because that land is worth probably what these guys are asking.
Or more, yeah.
If you took the average, that'd be around thirteen.
It's actually said, to have you get all that stuff done, you're gonna have maybe a half million dollars in a one point two million dollar piece of property.
That's right.
And, and what we're talking about, Marty, is that there's no sewer up there. Preston property's got sewer right down there. Now, we're gonna have a big lot of sewer, or the canals.
That's the easy part.
That's it.
And electrical's what's gonna be hard on you.
And, and then you, when you've got things that's got...
There, there are things we need to discuss before we think anything, but, but we kinda have some timelines on the Rose property.
Let me give you a quick example, because everybody knows about it.
Some of it's probably had to be bought, four poles can be moved.
Brian, y'all ain't done the work, I don't know, but I learned all that through the research. But there's one pole sitting in that mall, that new mall up there, Google. And what's sitting there? TBA. When they finally give a quote, it costs one million dollars. Now, they're, this is their kind of pole, but there's sixteen in this property that I figure will have to be moved. I mean, I don't, I'm like, we can't get an exact estimate, but...
In this Rose property, which it's a good idea, it'd be fine and dandy to build a completely new complex, but you gotta find that just like some other, and something like that come with a huge price tag, where in the past, which I've sat on the last time we done the building, and that was a, I mean, you have to go to the county commission. I mean, that's, that's the banker, you might say, they're the bankers. And when you get into a situation like that, that, that's gonna be hard to sell. Now, that's, that's a whole lot of money when you come something like that.
I talked to the mayor today, and we just talked about, for example, building owners, you know, and I'd love to, I think that's a showplace right there, I wanna make that clear.
What is?
The Rose property.
It's an absolute showplace.
I mean, you go on the interstate and...
You couldn't ask for a better place, you'd offer to sell it. But what we've gotta, as a board, decide, is it worth the difference in investment for the life of the school? But for example, a quick guy, the engineer told me, and Shane, I think you can tell, a baseball softball field, quick reference, two million. Probably looking at a football stadium, three million. So you're looking at five million that you're not gonna, that the county's not gonna have to pay for.
Because we got existing property there.
So, that's the case, we gotta weigh, or give the county two options, that, you know, you know, you can give them two options, let them decide if, but... And then if our study comes back, once we proceed, it might come back and say, hey, you don't need a high school.
That's exactly right.
If, if Rose property is a high school, I mean, what are we talking about? I mean, if everybody come back and says, hey, it's a middle school, or it's an elementary school, or whatever.
Well, here's a question I'd have for you, and as a new board member, sitting over here kinda in the corner, you know, I've not been exposed to all this conversation and everything, but, but you know, something you said right there struck the conversation. We had both high school principals in here this year, giving us their reports, said their enrollment was down. I've yet to hear a principal come in here and say their enrollment was past the limit, so it's hard for me to choke down, why do we need to do that?
Let's, let's keep in mind, we're looking for the future. We're not, Scotty, we're not look, the, the past board was not looking at present.
I understand that.
We're looking fifteen, ten, seven, eight years. We're looking for the, we had the mayor come in here and tell us, hey, we got this many houses, probably will be built here. Another one, thirty-five houses down here, another hundred houses over here, but it's not coming over that. But this board kind of was proactive instead of reactive, and we're like, hey, we need to secure a piece of property. And two years ago, after, after the, the session that we had, and, and the, the New Milton and Gordonsville deal, the board was committed to secure a piece of property, and we secured a piece of property. And then, of course, this piece of property comes up, so now, we're just trying to be proactive, right now, no, you're tenants. And if I can, if I can say this to you, it's, show me available room, not, not capacity, how many available rooms you have right now?
One now, because...
Because of kindergarten system?
We, we dropped one class, but, uh...
And Gordonsville Elementary's full, now you can grow within those rooms, but there's nowhere to go.
And we also have teachers, uh, that are on, teaching off carts, like our, uh, and, I don't know about, not in all the schools, but, you know, your art and music and all those are, are teaching off of...
Oh, I don't, I don't deny that. I guess, and I, and I guess probably for the sake of, of saving time and for a board meeting, I probably need to come to a building, the, the committee meeting and listening to some of this, because I haven't been exposed to it, whatever. But, you know, I'm just trying to wrap my head, and I'm just talking about Scotty, I mean, I, I don't know how everybody feels. I'm just trying to wrap my head around this thing, you know, do we want to, uh, nail ourselves to this piece of property over here that's requiring all of this has to take place, if it gets...
That's, that's exactly what we're looking at.
We're gonna put a barrel, we're gonna put apples in this and see which one, you get the most apple before you move. Right now, I think we're sitting here, not sure with anything, other than we've got a deadline.
But if you back the schools out, and I'm not against, but, when you get to Gordonsville, we got a funnel going on here, and Gordonsville, Main Street is just so big, and what I'm getting at is, you can just put so much into one city and it's full. And I'm not saying Gordonsville's full, but I'm just saying, us, well, if we go over here to New Milton and build a bigger school at New Milton, back those students back up over there, then we're taking pressure out of the high school at Gordonsville, aren't we? You're pulling students out of there and putting them back at New Milton, build a...
I can answer part of that. State says that you'll never build another school or own a school that don't have sewer. So, that's why you're so limited.
Right. To, to all our elementarys.
Like defeated, we, we can't build on the defeated.
Because they have the sewer.
They're not gonna ever give another permit, mine and Shannon's for that, they say they'll never. Union Heights, you know, we notice, right now, this weather, every time folks share a termite out on fins and needles, the whole week if it rains, because we got sewer problems, we got a problem.
Well, what's the closest sewer, I mean, is there any sewer around that area over there in the county?
Seizures, I think.
None of these county schools have, and that's a...
They're all set.
And before, when we done, and like I say, I said on this before, we had to purchase property and defeated just to put a fill line in. We had to purchase property...
Very expensive, very expensive.
Yeah, Union Heights had to have property leased to put a sewer line.
We've been through, we, we've really had some tough meetings over some of this already, looking at every option. That, that's the reason we're weighing our options, in the build.
And you don't wanna close the door on this.
No.
I've yet to do your due diligence.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll do that, so.
And we all agree, I think, that we need a study, and that we need to know, and one of the, this has been, I guess it's maybe been a year ago now, maybe fifteen months ago, uh, we had, uh, some individuals that come in, and they talked about the type of buildings, and how you can add, and what their best use was, and how we can best utilize what buildings that we do have, and what designs would work, and how we can, you know, make those work for us.
And neither's on the board, needs to be thought of, so it's hub, you need to build your, your offices and your cafeteria in a way that you can hub off of it and just keep growing.
Because our existing buildings, there's a core, like they described a core attendance, I believe is what they called it, where no matter how big you can build on, even if you could, and we can't, but if you could, your core stuff, which is like your gym, your cafeteria, your restrooms, are, are only, you can only get so many people and so many students.
They want, right. They want the design.
You wanna say that, that's all I even did before. Elementary wasn't so much, even, even though they were testing in their halls and elsewhere, it was a fact.
That they couldn't get them through the cafeteria.
An hour and a half extra for lunch, it brought into academics. And then we're, we're illegal with federal law as far as serving in their PE, we didn't have gyms.
Well, and then we were serving lunch from like ten AM to like one thirty to try to get all the kids to...
It wasn't the seating, they just didn't have the, you couldn't cook enough food, and get them through the line, there were how many people you hired.
So these issues have been well fleshed out, uh, you know, I think the board, uh, and of course, I realize half, half the board is, is new or third. Yeah, so, but I mean, they, these are all issues that we've, we've worked really hard on.
And we can get into more of that in the building committee, if you have more questions, just come to it, and we, we can answer more. We can get a little more in-depth with it. We'll get into some of these.
But I'm pleased to see that y'all recognize the same issues that, that we see.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've seen, we've looked at that. How many was on the, I know you was, Mr. Shouders, you on the pass building?
No, I come on the board right, so the only, the only thing I had to hand in is this central office. Yeah, that was the only thing I had to hand in.
I highly suggested all of us listen a lot to Mr. Shouders, because he list, he, he's lived it in... I highly suggested all of us listen a lot to Mr. Shodder, because he listens, he, he's lived it, and a very wise man takes me there. As you know, Mr. Schmidt this week said, pay a lot of attention to Mr. Shodder, because he's got a lot of experience in this. I think he can guide us.
Were you on the board during the, the whole building program, where they added and all that?
I think he's on. And Rick, you correct me if I'm wrong, I misspoke, but I think a previous board member at the time said, and before that, y'all had a study done, it was a study done. I think my father-in-law was director of schools, and a study was done, and the plan that they come up with was supposed to accommodate us for 30 to 35 years, I believe.
That's right. You're correct.
And of course, you know, 30 to 35 years, it's not long, it's 30 to 35 years, and the study was done back in the latter of the 90s, okay? So, here we're already 25 years in. I don't even think they took the growth that's done.
And when they do these days, I just don't really think they can actually, I mean, you don't know.
No, nobody's saying one.
Just four cases.
If 2008 and 2009 hadn't come, we'd always, we would have already been building something, because at that time, there was a wave.
Well, Nashville keeps bringing in people. I mean, Amazon announced 5,000 more corporate jobs to date. I mean, they're up there just, that growth has to go. People have to live somewhere, and they're not all gonna live downtown now.
They use a 1.5 scale for a household, whether it be apartment or a house. Guys, you're one.
There's something else going in down there.
Apartment complex, you're one subdivision away from being massive, that's how close you are.
What's that new one coming in?
So many of the businesses too are on the 840 corridor, and that, that can easily be accessed from Gordonsville.
There's so many coming in.
Announced this week. What's the new factory coming in on 840 down there?
That old, one old Riley's coming in.
Yeah, old Riley.
Yeah, yeah, new one coming, new one coming. We don't wanna make next week, because next week's Thanksgiving, and I'm good. On a Monday, I have a doctor's appointment, which I'll resume it on Tuesday.
Start on Tuesday.
Just throw it out there for me for a small game now, because I don't still have a game. I mean, I don't.
I don't care if you tell them at 6 o'clock.
We can do it, we can do it on a Monday, I don't care. But I mean, I understand. We can stay off of Fri, we can stop at Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, and I don't, but on church nights either, but I can do a Monday.
It'd be better. Six would be good, otherwise I gotta work. I get off at six.
Yeah, I've got a doctor's appointment, but I should be done by then. The Monday after Thanksgiving. 26.
26.
You wanna do it at 6 o'clock on the 26th, Monday after Thanksgiving? Well, building committee will make Monday to 26 at 6 o'clock, and then we'll go over some of this that he's got.
I'm the chairman of it, but I was building committee, but look at my life. Everyone sitting here needs to be.
Yeah, I wish you would be.
It'd be good.
Yeah, it would be good.
Look at what's going on, what's going on.
You know, I find that we all need to be.
I second that.
At least it's first, when everybody have a good idea of what's going on. November 26, 6 PM, building committee meeting.
The last time we met, what, 45 meetings on Friday, when we had Mr. Rose. Well, he's got some information we'll go over. I think that would be good. I think if anybody's got, thank you, if you've got concerns from your district people, or any questions they might have, that would help, they answered, you know.
All right. If there's no more discussion on that, we'll, we'll catch everything hopefully at the building committee meeting. Anybody have any questions about our annual policy review for October? No questions, comments? Okay, we do have, need to have a short executive session, if we can, to get everybody to clear out for a second.